I'd like to welcome Pastor Greg Foster, City of Milton Fire Department and Pastor of the Lighthouse Church, who will lead us in an invocation.
Thank you. Before I pray, I want to, I just want to tell you guys thanks and the city thanks for the token of love that y'all sent at the passing of my brother. It was greatly appreciated and was more than we expected, and I appreciate that very much. So, can we pray? Father, we come before you tonight, Lord, and we just thank you for this opportunity to stand at this platform, to lift up your name and to give you thanks and praise for all things. Ask God that you'd just lead tonight, God, this city council as they put their hands to that that you have, God, just called them and appointed them to do. Thank you, Lord, that they acknowledge you in everything that we do and here in this city, and I just thank you, God, that we are a city that's not ashamed to lift up your name and to put you first in all things. Pray your blessings upon these men and women. I pray your guidance upon them tonight, God, that you would just, well, direct everything that they do. Pray, God, as they put their hands, God, to the plow, that you would just allow them, God, first and foremost, to represent you and then represent this city. Ask God tonight your favor in all that we do. Ask God your anointing would just go before us in all that we do, and that some way, somehow, you would use us to reach others and be a blessing. We ask in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. And Mr. Foster, we'd just like to extend our condolences again on the passing of your brother and tell you that your family and you are still in our prayers. Thank you for being here tonight. We appreciate it. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council for Monday, October 5th, 2009, to order. Will the city clerk please call the roll and make general announcements?
Good evening, Mayor Protem and council. I'll be happy to call roll for the October 5th, 2009, regular meeting. However, I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Additionally, those attended the meeting who would like to provide public comment, either during a public hearing or during the call for public comment, we do ask that you complete a public comment card prior to speaking on that item. There is no public comment for consent agenda items or items under first presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in order that the speaker cards were received by city clerk staff prior to the meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable. When you hear the bell, you'll have 30 seconds to complete your remarks. The city council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or general public comment from a representative of such an organized group or association, provided however that such an individual shall file a notarized affidavit that they have the authority to speak on behalf of said organization on a form provided by city clerk staff. As I call roll, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood, let the record reflect that he is not present this evening. Councilmember Karen Thurman.
Here.
Councilmember Julie Zonner Bailey.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Lusk.
Here.
Councilmember Bert Hewitt.
Here.
Mayor Protem, Tina Diaversa.
Here.
Councilmember Alan Tard.
Here.
Thank you. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
And may I also ask for Nakunje Janon from the Math and Science Academy and representing his Boy Scout troop to join us up here and lead us in the pledge. Go ahead, sir.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. And thank you, Dad, for having him here. I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight, and our thoughts are with the mayor as he's traveling back from out of town. Will the city clerk please sound our first item?
First item is Agenda Item Number 09946, Approval of the Meeting Agenda.
Are there any items to be considered for the agenda? Do I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda?
Mayor Protem, I would like to approve Agenda Item 09946, Approval of the Meeting Agenda.
I'll second.
We have a motion to approve the meeting agenda and a second. Is there any discussion?
Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
The next item is Public Comment. Do we have any public comment?
No, ma'am.
Public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and city council and to provide input and opinions on any matter that is not scheduled for its own public hearing during today's meeting. There is no discussion on items on the consent agenda or first presentation from the public or from council. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must complete a comment card and submit it to the city clerk, and we welcome you to do so at this time. Please remember that this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of the city council in conversation. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address for the record. You'll have five minutes for remarks. Since there is no public comment, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Will the city clerk please sound the items?
Item number one is Approval of the September 14th, 2009 Work Session Minutes, Agenda Item Number 09947. Item number two is Approval of the September 21st, 2009 Special Call Meeting Minutes, Agenda Item Number 09948. Item number three is Approval of the September 21st, 2009 Special Call Work Session Minutes, Agenda Item Number 09949. Item number four is Approval of the September 21st, 2009 Regular Meeting Minutes, Agenda Item Number 09950. Item number five is Approval of a Contract with Comfort Zone Portables for the Milton Roundup, Agenda Item Number 09951.
Is there a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda?
Mayor Protem, I would like to approve the consent agenda items, please.
I'll second the motion. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda and a second. Is there any discussion?
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
There are no items under reports and presentations. Moving on to first presentation, city clerk, please sound the first item.
ZM 0903, which is the northwest corner of Webb and Morris Roads by Precision Design and Development, Bowen Family Homes. This is a request to modify the following conditions. Number one, to modify Condition 1D, which is RZ 05-022, site development shall be substantially consistent with the rendering and evaluation submitted to the Fulton County Department of Environment and Community Development on June 27, 2005, except for lots identified as 136 through 216, and on the revised site plan submitted on September 11, 2009, to the City of Milton Community Development Department. Two is to modify Condition 1. F, which is RZ 05-022, the minimum heated floor area for townhouse units shall be 2,000 square feet, except for those lots identified as 136 through 216, shall be a minimum heated floor area of 1,850 square feet. All units shall have a rear entry two-car garage, except for those lots identified as 136 through 216, on the revised site plan submitted on September 11, 2009, to the City of Milton Community Development Department. And three, to modify Condition 2A, which is ZM 07-03, to replace revised site plan submitted on July 2, 2007, to the City of Milton Community Development Department, with the revised site plan submitted on September 11, 2009, to the City of Milton Community Development Department. This is Item Number 09952.
Do I have a motion and a second on this first presentation?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the first presentation.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the first presentation items and a second. Is there, since there's no discussion on consent agenda?
Oh, that should say first presentation, Madam Mayor, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. That should have said on first presentation items. I apologize.
That's fine.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
There are no items on the zoning agenda or unfinished business. Moving on to new business, city clerk, please sound the next item.
Approval of a Resolution Authorizing the City of Milton to Apply for and Accept a Georgia Department of Transportation Gateway Grant. Upon award of the grant, the City of Milton shall enter into a mowing and maintenance agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation. Item Number 09953. Mr. Tom Wilson.
Thank you, Jeanette. I couldn't have said it any better myself. This is, should be very simple. This is a, an offer for a grant from the Georgia Department of Transportation for up to $50,000. There is no match. It can be used for design and landscaping at our city boundaries where you would drive in or out, where you would drive into the city of Milton. That occurs in six places. Arnold Mill, Birmingham, 376, and Highway 9. And so, we're asking you for permission to submit this application and if we are awarded it, to accept it. And then, the only stipulation on this is that if we do accept the grant money, we have to enter into a maintenance agreement with GDOT to maintain it once we've planted it. My thought is that we don't really have a design in mind at this point. We would probably take that through a design review board, let them advise us on what would be an appropriate design, then bring that back to city council for your concurrence on that, and then we could move ahead. We'd have some nice influence to the city.
Thank you. Is there any council discussion? Just a quick question. Thank you, Tom. Just a quick question in terms of the timing. When do we expect that we would hear?
It's uncertain exactly when we would hear, but I think it would probably be within the next couple of months.
Okay, terrific. Anybody else? Well, thank you, Mr. Wilson. Do I have a motion and a second? I'll put forward a motion, and that would be to approve Agenda Item Number 09953 for the approval of a resolution authorizing the City of Milton to apply for and accept a Georgia Department of Transportation Gateway Grant. Upon award of the grant, the City of Milton shall enter into a mowing and maintenance agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation.
I'll second that.
We have a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the City of Milton to apply for and accept a Georgia Department of Transportation Gateway Grant. Upon award of the grant, the City of Milton shall enter into a mowing and maintenance agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Moving on to mayor and council reports. Does anybody have anything to report this evening?
Julie. Just a reminder to everybody that we do have Rivers Alive on Saturday, and that'll be Saturday, October 10th, from 8:00 in the morning until 1:00 PM. And Rivers Alive is obviously a state-sponsored activity that I'm very pleased and proud to be able to be a part of and have been for, I don't know, going on 13 years. And so, we'll have scouts and students and parents and folks of all ages that will come and help to clean waterways, and we're hoping that we won't have rain on Saturday so that we don't end up with flooding waters. So, safety will be first and foremost, but we obviously continue to look and identify waterways that will hopefully include Chicken Creek, possibly one of our waterways over by Webb Road, as well as portions of Little River near our parkland, and we continue to look at those waterways just to make sure that they're indeed safe after the flooding that we've had over the last few weeks. So, please come and help to clean up the waterways in Milton.
And I would, I would add to that, that we are, in fact, the Hopewell Eco Explorers Club is coming over to Webb Road, which is the property of Dennis Pitts, Dennis Pitts, Dennis Potts, Hawaii, what a faux pas, on Saturday morning and help to clean up an area that is behind his property, that is a natural stream, and with his permission, we're going to try to train the kids a little bit on how to clean up the waterways and how to protect and what it means to them, and we felt like it'd be a really nice opportunity because the school is right across the street from his property, and it's a property that has been put up as an opportunity for the new Fulton County Public Library. So, you know, there's a lot that's centering around that these days. So, just to add to what you're going to be doing over at Chicken Creek, we will have the students out there at Mr. Potts' property on Saturday morning, bright and early.
Yes, and it is from 8:00 to 1:00, and so, we, and those that participate for however many shirts pulled out, we have Rivers Alive t-shirts, and folks obviously love to get those when they clean up, and we are in search of as many tires and metal and stuff that you can find. So, if anybody has a waterway that they know has particular needs, please let us know. So, thank you.
All right, so, any other council reports? All right, Mr. City Manager, staff reports?
Good evening. Yes, well, these meetings typically right after budget end up to be pretty short, and that's kind of by design because we've been working a lot of long hours at the meetings before tonight. Considering the fact that it is going to be short tonight, I do want to update you on several things. So, I know we were hoping for a record to get out of here, but bear with me, I've got, I think, five items to talk with you tonight about during the staff reports, and in no particular order. Oh, where do I want to start? Let me give you a quick update on the service delivery strategy that we've talked about at previous meetings, just so that you have kind of an interim update. You should, your attorney and I did attend a meeting, two of them actually, last Wednesday, and what we have discovered as a product of that meeting is that, according to the law, we really don't qualify as a county for an extension. I know I brought to you before, and probably it's related in the minute somewhere, that we were going to bring forward a resolution that asked for 120-day extension. At this point, that's just not something that is even feasible, so we likely will not bring that resolution forward. There's a certain group of people that are called out by statute as to who has to agree in the county. It's the county, the county seat, any city that's in the county that has a population greater than 9,000, and then 50% of the remaining cities in the county. We already have two cities on record that oppose an extension that meet one of those requirements of being required for the extension, so we just know that's not, we're just not going to get there. We have, at this point, kind of as an interim update, we have officially submitted on behalf of the city our, I guess, our two names of who we would be comfortable with in using as mediators to mediate this, and we will be back down at Fulton County, back down at ARC this week on Thursday, to be part of more discussion as well as to be part of the selection process for the mediators that are used to get us to the next step. So, Ken and I will represent the city and you all again this week at the next meeting. Probably better that I give you some updates just periodically as this thing goes forward rather than going in a complete public disclosure tonight of what we think our next steps will be after October the 31st if we don't get to an agreement. I want you to feel comfortable that we haven't neglected that and that we have actually put a thought process in place that if we don't get to agreement by October the 31st, we know what we're going to do next, and that'll either be a matter that we want to talk about after that occurs or an executive session if it happens to qualify. So, just know there will be updates that are going almost probably at every meeting that we're at, and I'll keep you updated as we go through this and get towards that October the 31st deadline. Anybody have any questions on service delivery strategy that I can answer while we're talking about it? I've got a couple.
I've got, I've got a couple of questions. On the first one, has any of the cities, any of the affected cities passed any resolutions besides the couple of resolutions to not do any extensions? But has any of the cities passed a resolution to try to get Fulton County to agree to the remaining issues?
No, nobody's really passed any type of resolution because it's specifically called out in the state statute as to what would allow an extension to even be possible. We were going to come up with very standard language that we were going to adopt with the cities that were requesting an extension, but the fact that we already have two cities that have passed resolutions in opposition to an extension, an extension just doesn't, there's no way we can get to a legal extension at this point.
And I'm sorry, other than, other than the resolutions to extend or to try to get an extension, has there been any resolutions of any kind from the city councils to try to get Fulton County to agree to the remaining issues and the delivery strategy?
I got, I got your question now. Actually, it's not Fulton County that's the issue here. There's a lot of different players in the service delivery strategy, and there are disagreements between probably two of the bigger ones without going into their details. There's some disagreement, pretty strong disagreement between the City of Sandy Springs and the City of Atlanta, as well as some pretty strong disagreement between the City of Atlanta and the South Fulton Water Sewer Authority. So...
I thought you had previously mentioned that one of the things that Fulton County hasn't agreed to is our sewer service area.
That's where our issue is. Now, that's what we would be going to mediation on, but there are a host of issues that have caused this whole service delivery to get to a point that we've reached really impasse in being able to solve them in a group, in a, in a non-formal mediation-type process. So, yes, I go back to what our issues, our issues are with the service delivery strategy. If you look at what other folks' issues are with disagreeing, ours are very small, and when we brought ours up last week, we got put on the board, which was great. We needed to be on the board because we needed to be recognized to know we had an issue to mediate, but we were really a small, kind of a small cog in this thing. Unfortunately, it's the big cogs affect us too, even though we don't really have an issue with it, so...
And I assume this is just like any other mediation session. You've got a mediator, you've got people representing the City of Milton, you've got people representing Fulton County, and the mediator works between the two parties, and I guess my question is, what kind of power or deciding authority do the people, and I assume that's you and Mayor Lockwood, have on agreeing or not agreeing to a, an agreement that's been worked out with Fulton County relative to sewer?
Turn that one over to Ken.
Councilmember Tard, anything, whenever you talk about mediating with a governmental entity, I always qualify our mediation sessions with the notion that anything we agree on would have to be taken back to the council for them to approve it. At least as far as I am concerned, the city council has spoken with respect to what it anticipates with respect to sewer, and any modification of that would have to come back to you all. But right now, you know, when we discussed this in the session, Fulton County quickly basically summed up our disagreements. So, they are very aware of the issues between us. They are very aware of, in fact, probably the minutia of the issues between us, and I don't think that anything is going to happen in a mediation session that would catch either party offside. I think Chris, the city manager, has done a very good job of making their expectations and what they should realize is our position, so I don't think that Fulton's going to get in a mediation session with us and expect the mayor or the city manager to come up with something novel they've never heard before. I think the lines are pretty clearly drawn.
Okay.
And I want to echo what the city manager said, too, is this was the first time I had gone down with Chris to watch, and watching the enthusiasm with some of the parties and their issues gave me a really nice idea that the issue that the City of Milton has with Fulton is not the linchpin of getting this thing done. The issues between City of Atlanta and the South Fulton Water District at Sandy Springs are much more, I think are going to be much more difficult issues to deal with than ours. Those folks have a lot of serious, very difficult issues to get through.
I know Councilmember Zonner Bailey has some questions for you with regard to the SDS, but have we gotten our tax digest from Fulton County yet?
We should be able to. The answer to your question is no, I don't think we've gotten an official one. Although Stacy hasn't been here Friday or today, she will be back in the office on Wednesday. So, I want to qualify that with saying, we may have it, and I just didn't realize it today, but all indications, at least with what she's hearing, is that we are on track to be able to bill taxes on October the 15th.
October the 15th, okay. Councilmember Zonner Bailey?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protem. Just with regards to the IGA and knowing that what I just heard was that everybody's pretty clear on what that line in the sand was, I'll just assume for clarification purposes that that means when you go back to a year ago, September, when there was obviously some sewer extended, but that that revised decision and map is where things stand and that there's not been any negotiation or discussions with Fulton County or with Commissioner Riley that would deviate from what this council voted on in terms of that final map. Is that correct?
And I'll be very clear with that, with an answer to that question. There has been no other negotiation with Fulton County other than to ask that they replace the map that they tried to put in the service delivery strategy with the map that this council approved. We have deviated not even one small bit from that particular map, and that's where we are at this point, is Fulton County is squarely behind the map that they think is accurate, and we're squarely behind the map we think is accurate, and I don't see that either party's going to change their position at this point.
And I have a question for City Attorney Gerard. I know that at one point, I guess two things, is that, one, we heard kind of after the fact that Fulton County had attempted to insert a map, which was not the map that we had agreed to, or that at least some people on this council had agreed to. Can you speak to that and just state specifically that Fulton County did indeed try to put a map in that would have further extended sewer? Can we just clarify that?
Well, what I understand is that a map was forwarded to the city manager with sort of an admonition of, hey, this is the map that we would like to make part of the SDS deal with you, and the city manager forwarded it to me, and we talked about it, and of course confirmed that it was the July 2008 map that Fulton had produced long ago, and of course was the map that this council did not approve, and so, I, I'm not, I'm not sure about slipping in, but certainly there was an effort at having the city approve a map that, and quite frankly, Chris asked me a very pragmatic question, what do I do with this? And the answer was, we can't do anything with it because that's not the map the city approved.
And thank you for that. And then my second question, I know at one point, the Fulton County attorneys, or at least one of the commissioners, had talked about having evidence that there was some predetermined or pre-existing agreement for sewer extension in areas that indeed were not part of the EDOA and that were outside of our sewer areas. Have they ever produced any evidence to that effect?
No, and what you're talking about is some of the letters I've received from the Fulton Attorney's Office where they had indicated that there was some vesting issues or some other legal entitlements by those other parcels that we did not include in our map, and they have never followed that up with me. Now, I mean, I'm speculating here, so I don't know why they haven't, but it could have been because we have other issues that have kind of subsumed those, like the litigation between us now, but that Councilmember Zonner Bailey, the short answer to your question is no.
Okay, so I would assume that during that mediation discussion, that would be one of the questions we would obviously want to ask is, where's the evidence? If you guys want to claim, and if Fulton County wants to claim that somehow there was a vested interest in other properties for sewer, it's been over a year, where's the evidence? So, I would hope that we would lead with one of those questions, because I'm, of course, not aware of any evidence, and until they can produce some, I think we can all still assume that there's no evidence that would indicate that there's a vesting. So, thank you, I look forward to those updates. When was it that you guys were going to be meeting?
We'll meet again this Thursday. Okay, that was item number one. Maybe these others will go a little bit quicker. I want to talk, oh, second, what order do we go in? We've got an opportunity that the CPAC would like to meet with this council sometime during the week of the 26th. And I sent out an email, and I think I've kept the correct tally, but it might be better with us just being here face-to-face tonight to kind of look at that week of the 26th and see if, see if there is a day that everybody is available. That week, Monday is on the 26th, Tuesday 27th, and so on for the remainder of the week. I know Councilmember Hewitt, we probably should start with you because you were traveling almost that whole week except the 26th, correct? So, you would be the 26th only. Councilmember, Mayor Protem Diaversi, you were not available the 26th, correct? That was on Monday?
I am available the 26th.
You are.
I'm not available the 28th.
That may have just solved our problem.
Something I can get out of that wood.
Councilmember Tard, are you available 26th?
I am available the 26th.
Oh, wonderful. Councilmember Lusk?
26.
26?
26.
26? Oh, that was easy. 26, it is.
Check that one off.
Now, we just have to get the mayor there.
And can we confirm what time that meeting will be? Is that going to be 5:00 or 6:00?
Let's do 6 o'clock.
Thank you. And I would like to ask, if we ever decide to have a special call meeting and the time changes, if we could just make sure that everybody has that information, that'd be awesome. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Tard, I want to make sure I address your email, I think you forwarded it to the council today that talks about political signs out in front of City Hall. I guess I'll look to you all as whether or not that's something that you want us to address at this point. Maybe I'll let Councilmember Tard kind of explain what his position is. I think Ken probably can explain where we are with respect to the law, as we are in a leased building here at City Hall. So, I just want to open this up to kind of cause the discussion to happen, and I'll certainly do whatever, whatever we decide through that discussion.
Sure. Well, as you know, I drive up and down Deerfield Parkway every day going to work, and I've noticed that we have political signs out in front of City Hall. We now have three candidates' signs out in front of City Hall, and I'm sure there potentially will be more. It is my opinion that City Hall needs to be apolitical, and I know that we are in a leased building and that the person who owns this building can certainly express his or her views. However, I also think that the city needs to not provide a perception that it is involved in politics. It needs to be involved in the business of running the city. I think it sends the wrong message to our citizenry for there to be political signs out in front of City Hall. I don't know why they would be there, and not everybody knows that, you know, this is a leased building and that the owner is the one that put the signs there, gave permission for the signs to be there. Some people may think the city's involved in politics, and it doesn't need to be involved in politics. I know that as far as the federal government's concerned, of course, a lot of the buildings that the federal government leases are indeed leased, and they are leased from private citizens, and it is forbidden to put political signs on those properties. It'd be like me putting Obama or a Bush or some other sign in front of FDA building. It's forbidden, and I think we should have a policy to do the same here.
May I respond, Councilmember Tard?
Sure.
And not respond, but at least just...
Sure.
...answer or address a few of those points. First of all, with respect to the federal government leases, and I have not had a chance First of all, with respect to the federal government leases, and I have not had a chance to review the city's lease, it's likely the federal government leases contain a clear prohibition against that and give the la C, the federal government, the right to prohibit that sort of speech. What I advised the city manager today was two things. First of all, I certainly understand if you want to keep the grounds of City Hall apolitical. I understand the policy rationale behind that. Makes perfect sense to me. I understand it. But since it is private property that you just happen to have a leasehold interest in, I did advise the city manager, though, that before we take down political speech on private property, we need to reach out to the landlord and ensure that that individual or that entity has no problem with that. It's very likely they don't. It's very likely they have no knowledge of those signs up. But I would like that to be confirmed, just because we don't want to be in the habit of the government stopping political speech unless we have permission to do so. And if the landlord says, I didn't even know they were there, I don't care about them, I understand you don't want them up, take them down, then the city manager can, with full comfort and authority, take them down.
Mr. Gerard, what is the law with regard to freedom of speech that would allow, you know, I know this is private property, but if the landlord has given proper authority for those signs to be there, what is the law with regard to freedom of speech?
If there's nothing in our lease that would prohibit it, which I don't believe there is, and if the private property owner wants them to remain there, they will remain there. The single enactment that this city has done is your ordinance, is your sign code. And so long as they don't violate your sign code, our private property, with the private property owner's permission, they can stay. That's why, however, that if Chris goes and reaches out to them and they say, we don't have any concern with you taking them down, and if you all are comfortable with them being taken down for the policy reasons that Councilmember Tarr mentioned, we are acting fully within our authorities to take them down.
But at this time, we don't have a policy that precludes freedom of speech?
Well, we will never have a policy that precludes freedom of speech, but the public policy position that city property cannot have political signage on it, I don't think that's articulated anywhere. And this council could do that anytime if it wants to do that. And you all may, you know, give the city manager even by, without exception, give him direction almost under a clean-up-the-lawn, under lawn maintenance, but if that's not where you all want to be tonight, that's fine as well. I think the city manager just needs, wants a little guidance.
And it's certainly not my, it's not, you know, I don't want to prohibit freedom of speech. That's not the, and under normal circumstances, under, if we were, you know, if we weren't renting a city hall in a business center, we would have city property.
Yes.
And I'm quite certain that a campaign, city council sign would not be allowed to be displayed on city property for the reasons that I've already articulated.
Well, may I address that? I don't want to interrupt you, but I just want to address that single point. But, see, that happens all the time. If you go to a voting precinct, a lot of voting precincts are in City Hall or the county governing building, and you'll see those prohibitions against, you can't have signage within 100, 150 feet. But right outside of those lines, you'll see 400 political sign displays because they are expressly allowed by that government. So, I can see it. My point is, it goes both ways. I know one jurisdiction I represented leased a piece of property, their own property, for a parking lot right next to their administration building. They leased it from a, the city that they were in. So, the county leased it from the city. Well, there was a big referendum coming up for a matter that really was favored by the county, and the city was against it. And so, they hung a huge sign up on their property that we leased against our referendum. And we had the same debate in that county, who was madder than a wet hen, that that city had hung up a sign on our leased property against our referendum. So, the points are great, with Councilmember Tarr. But in that situation, just like in this one, we read out, flipped through the lease real quick to see if we could shut that sign down, and we couldn't.
Well, let me ask this. If this were a government building, a government-owned building, it wasn't a lease, would the signs out on Deerfield Parkway be acceptable?
If they're, if they're not in the right of way...
Because the same landowner owns this whole street, you know, owns all the property up and down pretty much both sides of the street, and the signs are all the way up and down. Of course, I don't have a dog in the fight.
I understand.
I just, I just think that the city needs to be dealing with city business and not involved in that.
I think the, I think the answer is, is if they're not in the right of way, so don't offend your sign code. And they otherwise are not, in other words, you all have not spoken. I mean, you as the, you as a city council are the final decision-makers with respect to how city property is treated. And if the city council says, we have no problem on any city property in the city, if you want to put up political signage, you may do so. But if you do that, both sides, any point of view is allowed. Or you could say, for the very policy reasons you're articulating, we think that allowing political campaign signs in city property sends the wrong message to constituents. It shows that we're not impartial, whatever, we're going to forbid it outright. Then, of course, you forbid it for everyone. I think you could go either way, is my point, Councilmember Tarr. And I'm not aware of the city right now having a policy one way or the other.
And we've made it through two elections without there being any campaign signs in front of City Hall, which is interesting to me. I don't know, this is the first time that we, two years ago, we had no campaign signs out in front of the building. And when the city was incepted, we didn't have anything out in front of City Hall either. This is the first time.
I'm not trying to get in the way of anything, and I'm not even sure what, that you're necessarily proposing, but to the extent you're suggesting, I'd like to see a policy by the council that on city property, we don't allow political signage. You can do that, is my point. You can do that. I'm just not aware that it's been done formally yet, is my only concern.
And I think, I think that's what we should do.
Yes, sir.
Do you have any comments from the rest of the council with regard to Mr., to Councilmember Tarr?
Oh, I think it's a good question. I mean, I hadn't really thought about it until Councilmember Tarr posed it today. And I think from the perspective of being apolitical, I think that that's a legitimate comment. Do we have a policy in place today? No. If it was city-owned property, would that be typical? Probably not. You know, when I think about the whole, you're really probably only talking about just the front of that which is specifically associated with the City Hall. You know, I could probably go either way, but I surely understand the point is that City Hall, and I think a lot of the policies are, that we talk about as a city are to be apolitical. So, I can understand that for that portion of the property that's in front of City Hall, I can understand that. And so, I'd be interested in what everybody's perspective was.
And I want to continue because you've hit on something that made, you know, I think that more often than not, most jurisdictions that you go to, if you have just some, a patch of lawn out in front of an administrative building for a government and stick a political sign in there, I think nine out of 10 times, that government's going to want that sign gone. I mean, not only from the standpoint of aesthetics, but just from the standpoint of, you know, once you dive into the political landscape like that, it's awkward. It just is, because this is the government for whom people are running. And I get that. So, I think that if the council believes that the thing to do is to express or, you know, or direct the city manager, that we need to keep our city property clear of that. I think that would be perfectly appropriate.
Councilmember, you got?
I agree. I think going forward, we need to, whether it's the City Hall or parkland or whatever, you know, have a policy against it. For wrapping this up this evening, you know, I would just, just settle this and not have to get the city manager to ask this, that, or the other. I think, you know, if we could ask folks to have signs from that driveway to that driveway to move them somewhere, if there would be an agreement to that, we can nip this in the bud and maybe go into a little bit further detail.
One person isn't here. One person's whose sign is, is not out there. I think Chris just...
Yeah, we'd have to, we'd have to adopt a policy. So, if the council agrees, if you guys agree that you like...
I think you're just asking for it to be voluntary for now rather than, because we can't get a policy approved within, you know, three, four weeks' time.
And I think that if, as long as it's on an agenda where you can actually vote on it, which, which, you know, it would take no more than a motion. I move that the city council adopt a policy that political signage should not be allowed on city property. Second...
So, we could go ahead and put that on an agenda for next, the next meeting?
Yes, ma'am. I don't think we need the magnet card, and I'm not, no one's suggesting that, but I just don't think we need a 45-page document to accomplish what you're talking about accomplishing. It's very...
Well, if everybody agrees, let's go forward that way. I don't think voluntary will work in this instance because we have folks running that are not council members currently. And we'd all agree probably to do it voluntarily, but...
Well, I think there's opportunity here for gentleman's agreement to come to that conclusion. I'd support Allen's proposal here. We're talking about 183 feet across the front here. Got a couple of city parks out there. Got to lead, folks. We've got 203 miles of road, and if you take two sides, I bet you got 406 miles of opportunity out there to place a sign.
It's a lot of size.
So, what's 183 feet? And it's, I think we're wasting a lot of time here discussing. I see your point, and I think it's valid.
So, I'd just go ahead and enact that or put that on the agenda for the next meeting and include all of city property.
Could I go ahead, and I'll just go ahead and do a quick resolution?
Sure.
And we'll draft it up and get it adopted?
And again, I would include, as to Councilmember Lusk's point, all of the city property, including all of our parkland.
Now, just...
Do we need to spell out leased, or?
Well, I was going to say, you know, since, since the person who provided the lease to us, since that wasn't a precondition of the lease, is that going to be an issue?
I think what we would do is, once the city adopts that resolution, we would reach out to the landlord and just confirm. I can almost guarantee the landlord will have no concern whatsoever.
Okay. Good. That was item three of five, in case you count. Last two real quick. Update on the Christmas tree. I thought I was going to have a better update for you tonight. I don't. Apparently, the donator, let me just say Ms. Colley, we know who's donating the tree. Ms. Colley called or sent an email last week indicating something about the October the 24th date that we had talked about needed to remain in place. I asked her to come in and speak with me. Our schedules got away from us on Friday. We were on the calendar to meet Friday at 11:30 in the morning in hopes that I would have an update better for you tonight as to why that needed to be such a firm date. That meeting didn't occur. It is now scheduled to happen Wednesday morning. So, I just don't have an update for you. I look forward to having one for you as soon as I can. Just wanted to put that out there so you're aware. And finally, October the 1st was the beginning of the transition from CH Toom Hill to city operations. That date was last week. Yeah, today's Monday. That date, they all run together. That date was last week. You got an email from me that day, at least expressing a portion of what the transition plan was going to be, going to be. And I am awaiting this week more definitive transition documents from representatives of CH Toom Hill. And as soon as I get those, I will forward those to you, although we are actively moving forward with the, with the plan that you all saw last week. So, we'll go into that plan in a lot of detail at the work session next week. It is the last agenda item. It's a reasonably comprehensive document, and I don't know that I necessarily want to go through a 25-page transition plan with you tonight, but we'll have the opportunity to do that at the work session next week to just kind of give you some ideas to what our benchmarks are and what kind of our timeline is and when certain things are going to go into effect and go into place. So, look forward to that at the work session next week. Next week's work session will be again in this room. I know we were going to try to get into that other room, to our conference room, which I really think is a better environment. But when I look at the five items that are on the agenda for next week, each of them brings a lot of people to the, to the meeting. We will have CPAC here for one of the agenda items. We'll have URS here. We'll have Kim Lee Horn representatives here. We'll have the staff here. The group for those five agenda items is just too big, in my opinion, to be in that executive conference room for fear that the public would show up to hear any of those agenda items, and we'd all be in there in a standing-room environment. So, with your blessing, as much as I really want our work sessions to be in that executive conference room, I think next week needs to be in here. So, we will be in here at 6:00.
Thank you.
I'm sure I have a bunch more information to share with you. I try to keep you updated on big items that you might be interested in knowing about by email. So, hopefully you're getting those specifically as it relates to transition, the human resource position, and any other items that I think are of interest to you. I try to get them to you right when they're occurring. If I've missed anything, call me. I'm not going anywhere anytime soon. There's a lot, a lot of work to be done here at City Hall. So, at any point, give me a shout, and I'll be happy to update you on any of the things that are going on within the walls of City Hall.
Thank you.
Mayor Protam, I do need you after the meeting's over with, just for a brief moment to sign a contract.
Okay.
Okay?
And I want to thank you guys, just public citizens that have joined us here this evening, and Mr. Janon for helping us to lead our pledge, and for our city staff that's been here with us this evening, and our fire chief. Thank you for joining us. And to members of the council, thank you so much for your time. Councilmember Tarr?
I have a quick question. In light of Ms. Colley's latest statement, do we need to block off any time on the 24th, just in case?
It's probably a safe thing to do. I don't want to not have the tree donated by trying to do it a different date. Ms. Colley's indication to me is that the arborists that are moving the tree have provided her accurate information that the tree is just as capable of surviving on October the 24th as it is on the November, whatever dates those were that we were talking about. And I'm not an arborist, so I look to our arborist to give me good professional advice, and her arborist as well. Unfortunately, Councilmember, I just don't, I'm not sure yet what the, what I'm dealing with, so Wednesday I have a better answer.
And if it did happen on that day, are we talking about, I know that we had talked about the planning in the morning and the lighting?
No, no, no.
No, that wouldn't happen.
This would just be the planning. Oh, obviously, never mind. Okay.
And she has, she has planned this with her folks...
Halloween tree.
Her folks that are moving the tree have scheduled it, and they cannot do it within the timeframe that you're suggesting, or our arborists had suggested. So, what ends up happening is we push it so far into the holiday season that the fear was that that was going to be a challenge. So, that's really why, according to my conversation with her, that she wanted to speak with you and to try to do it on the 24th. And they've assured her that, obviously, there's no guarantees, but that...
Sure.
They feel like it would have just as much of a viability as in November.
So, then what'll happen is they'll go in the ground one day and get lit a different day?
Absolutely.
Unless you want a Halloween tree.
Near December.
All right. Thank you, guys.
I'm sorry. I just had one quick question relative to the work session next week.
Uh-huh.
When you talked about our transition process, I know that we were waiting on some additional financials from CH Toom Hill. Do we anticipate that we will have those before that work session?
I do anticipate that I'll be prepared to discuss that.
But we don't yet have those?
That is correct.
Do I have a motion and an agenda, a motion and a second to adjourn this meeting?
I move to adjourn the meeting?
Second.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous, meaning adjourn 6:51.